Hey students, good evening. Yes, hello everyone. I am so sorry for the delay, there was some technical glitch. Yes, we have Pratna Gupta, we have Hari. Good evening Hari, hey Jonathan, Desha Bhatt. Yes, Gungun Tagore is here. Yes, good evening. Hey Lia, Hemma, Sakshi Singh, Deepak Dinesh. Yes, Pranavi, Ayush Biswas, Always Learning, Manvi, Pranavi. A very, very good evening to all of you. I am doing good, thanks for asking. So, the academic year, the final status of your academic year have arrived, yes? So, exams are just one month away. I know that at this point of time, you might be, some of you might be feeling nervous, some of you might be very excited, maybe tense or stressed out. So, today, we decided to do this session that we will be discussing the importance of mental health for students, yes? Yes, good evening Rita, Meghna, Megha, ANVL, Subham Kumar, yes, a very, very good evening. Yeah? Yes, I am feeling good. Thank you Hari. Aditi Datta, Gungun, Lavya. Alright, alright. So, just one month away, right? So, how are you feeling right now? Sorry, just give me one second. Just give me one second, yeah. So, to discuss this, what you are going through right now, see, I gave my 10th board exams long time back. So, kind of like I have forgotten that feeling, yeah? So, just like you, Alex is also going through the same feeling, right? You all know Alex, right? Do you remember him? Do you remember those sessions when we met Alex before, yeah? Sleep timing, sure, sure, we will discuss that. Yes? Yeah, so, so Alex is also going to appear for the term two exams just like you all. Alex, everybody is saying hi to Alex, yeah? Alright, so the thing with Alex is that he doesn't feel confident yet. Though exams are just one month away, so he has a lot of things going on in his mind, so many thoughts. Low self-esteem, anger, self-doubt, distress, fidgeting, negative self-talk. So, do you also feel the same? Do any one of you has the same feeling? Any of these feelings? Yes, anyone? Yes. Alex is now our best friend, yes. Nervousness. Absolutely Hari, Alex doesn't need to worry, we are here. Deepak, nothing, great. Bhavesh, yes. For you only two days left, oh my god, all the very best. Confident, that's nice. Nikki is saying I am very confident. Lavya, a little nervous. Yes, Swamika, anger, why you don't want to give exams? Yes? Ram, no nervous. Yes? Prateek, amazing, yeah? Deepak Dinesh, happy, that's good. See, if you have any of these kind of feelings, any of the negative thoughts in your mind, then just don't worry. Because that's why we have come up with this session. Mental health is very, very important and that's what we are going to learn today, yes? JP Power, no feelings at all. Self-doubt, yes, it happens, it happens with most of the students. Worried for exams, that's okay, scores, don't worry about scores. Gungun Tagore, no worry, that's good. Headache and nervousness, so you have a mixed bag of feelings, isn't it? So, last time you remember, Alex was also confused last time. He did not know how, when the 50 days were left for the exams. So, last time his father came for his help. And just like that, this time Alex's mother is going to help him. So, she is also very smart. She understood just by looking at his face that definitely something is wrong with Alex. So, she asked him, what is the issue? Are you okay? You look tense. See, all the mothers can understand this, all the mothers can make out just by looking at their kids' face, isn't it? Yes? Absolutely Nikki, calm and confident is the mantra to success. Absolutely Gungun, right? हाँ, उसके पापा ने कार चलाते-चलाते गाइड किया था। This time mother is going to help. Thank you Lavya. Thank you Jatin. I am glad that you all are actually finding it fruitful, that it is actually benefiting you. So, Alex says, yes, my term two exams are very close and I am not confident at all. Just like many of you just wrote that I am not confident. And I feel very good when you write that, yes ma'am, I am very confident for the exams. So, mother says, just don't worry, let's go to your room, let's sit together and we will discuss this in detail, what to do now. So, the mother says, I can understand your feeling because we have gone through this same feeling. Even I can understand this too because long time back though, but I have also gone through the same feeling, yes? I can't, I cannot really remember that feeling, but still I can understand, it happens with everyone. Peer pressure is there, yes? I know that a lot of students have this thing in their mind because their parents pressurize them or their teachers are pressurizing them. Please, please, I would request all the parents, whether it is teachers, no need to pressurize students. Don't feel pressurized. Confident, but I feel I am not confident about my confidence, what is it Hari? Yes? See, it's all a mind game, I always tell you. If you feel confident from inside, trust me, you would do your best. Whatever you know, whatever you have prepared till now, it's all what's in your mind, right? ज्यादा नेगेटिव मत सोचो, जितना पॉजिटिव सोचोगे उतना बेटर करके आओगे. No pressure at all, that's good. Yes. So, so mother has already understood what Alex is going through. And I can also understand what you are going through right now. This anxiety, this nervousness, like all these feelings that you have right now, it's nothing but it's called test anxiety. Test anxiety, I mean, what is it actually? Well, it's basically a form of performance anxiety. That is characterized by feeling of worry, tension and even feelings of physical illness in the face of taking an exams. It happens, trust me, many people face this issue before an exam, they will fall sick. Or they get so nervous that, you know, they are not able, whatever even they have in their mind, even they know the topic really, really well, they would make blunder in the exam. Does that happen with you also? Yes? I have seen a lot of students and in fact, many of my friends when I was in school. Even if you know things well, but because you are nervous, you make a blunder. Absolutely, positive thinking is important. It's not just during exams, it's basically, I would say, it's a lesson for your life. You make silly mistakes, maybe you are rushing with, rushing with your paper when you do it, right? And silly mistakes we do when we are rushing and why we are rushing because you have that anxiety actually. Sakshi Singh, nervous. So, many of the students are writing the same thing that they are nervous, right? This nervousness is nothing but that's the test anxiety that you have. See, normally, if you are not sitting in an examination hall, I give you a question to do. So, there is no pressure in your mind, so creativity and all, everything will come, right? आप इजीली वो क्वेश्चन कर दोगे, without thinking anything. But, when it comes to giving, giving an exam and I give you the question, same question that time, there are more chances of making an error. That's because of the pressure in your mind, whether it's your parents' pressure, it's your teacher's pressure, whatever it is, whether it's your own pressure, right? Yes Hari, that's what happens. You are so tense, you are so stressed out that you fall sick. Yes, I am very, I am, Fennel is saying I am very nervous. My BP is goes high before, four, five hours before the exam. Seriously, why, why do you feel nervous? Why do you feel that, okay, exam है, exam, ऐसा मत सोचो, exam है, exam है, क्या हो जाएगा? What will happen? Marks कम आएंगे, that's it? I cry at times during the exam. How to overcome the fear of exams and results? You remember we did a session, how to overcome the fear of maths, yes? I am sure that that session would have helped you, yes? Not much, but at least a little bit of it. Please, watch that session again. And try, whatever I tell you, try implementing those things in your life. See, we have learnt all these things by experience, right? Due to nervousness, कभी-कभी गलती हो जाती है, that's what I am telling you. Even if you know the topic, just because you are nervous, you have that anxiety, you end up making mistakes. Half mark you lost because of silly mistake, even silly mistakes happen because you are rushing, right? आप सोचते हो, okay, मुझे जल्दी करना है, ये करना है, ये करना है, so, don't think that. Yes. Being confident is the best remedy, preparation, that's important, yes? Alright. So, sometimes I would say that a little bit of nervousness, I also have gone through the same, same thing, right? So, sometimes I would say that a little bit of nervousness is good, it is fine, it happens with everyone, obviously, right? Because what happens when you have that nervousness, just a little bit of it, then you actually perform well. You try to give your best because in that nervousness you would study more, isn't it? So, somehow you try, you basically end up performing best. But if that distress becomes so excessive, then it actually hinders your performance during the exam, yes? So, a little bit of nervousness is fine, but it should not be too much. That's what, Abhiya, you know everything, but you will forget everything during the exam, it's because of anxiety only. That's what you need to overcome first. This is the exam phobia. Yes. आसपास के लोग बोल-बोल के प्रेशर, एग्जाम का प्रेशर देते हैं, that's what, you see, even if the other people are saying, they will say it, but you need to make up your mind first, right? You need to have that thinking that it's okay, it's just an exam, I am prepared for it, yes? That's good Ram, you play games before the exam day. Two kind of people can do it, either they are just not worried about it. Second thing, they know everything, either they are very confident or they just don't care about it. And I feel that's a good attitude, why do you want to worry? Yes Jackson, pre-ward exams today, I hope it went well, yes? Abhi is saying, I like how you personally understand that, that's what I was saying, we have gone through the same thing. बच्चों की प्रिपरेशन अच्छी है या नहीं? See, all of you I know have a different caliber. Some of you might be done, might have a caliber of scoring hundred percent, some might have a caliber of scoring ninety, eighty, seventy percent. Marks do not matter. They do matter up to a certain extent, exams are important, I am not saying they are not important. But, उसका प्रेशर नहीं लेना है, right? थोड़ा बहुत मार्क्स कम भी आए, that's fine. Yes, don't be afraid of exams. Alright, so, let's move ahead. Now, Alex's mother is also saying the same thing, you see, exams are important, yes, but the most important thing is your mental health, that's what I am saying. Now Alex is saying, mental health, that means, so, Alex is so stressed out right now, so just to calm him down, the mother asks him, which game do you like the most, right? So, he says, it's cricket, right? So, mother asks him, why do you play cricket? So, just like Alex, many of you would have, would also have some favorite sport, right? Or you have some hobbies. So, the same question I would ask you, let's suppose you like football or you like basketball, whatever the sport is, why do you like to play that? You would say that, ma'am, to remain, to keep, because it keeps us active, so that we remain healthy, so that it relieves our stress and it keeps us energized the entire day, isn't it? That's why, so just to have good physical health, we play sports, right? Thank you BN Tech, do you all agree with me? I am sure that some of you might be, might like some sports. Yes, some of you might not be a sports person, I was not a sports person though. Yes. Desha, self-doubt will kill us more than failure, so be confident, yes, don't doubt yourself. Gungun Tagore, agreed. Simran, yes. Sakshi, yes ma'am, you are right. Yes. Jackson, pre-ward went well, that's good, but you messed up the case study. Case study is coming for the first time, so you would not find many questions, obviously, the previous sample papers also, it won't be there since it is coming for the first time. So, you can go through the session of case studies that we have done. There we have discussed the case studies for every chapter that you have. Yes. Thank you Deepak, amazing Suraj. Online games helps to overcome the fear of exam. See, I am not saying don't, don't play games, everyone has a different hobby. So, whatever you want to do, whatever you feel that it helps you to overcome your, overcome the stress, do it. Whatever works best for you, you would know, you would know yourself best, right? Cricket and badminton. So, just like Kriti, I was also not a sports person. So, what I used to do, when I used to take a break, I used to listen to the music or I would watch movies or I would go out. So, everyone has a different way, right? Alright, so this was about physical health. So, Alex has understood that physical health, he knows that why physical health is important, right? So, now the mother says, as your body needs exercise to be healthy, in a similar manner, your mind also needs regular exercise to perform well, right? Just like your body, your mind also needs regular exercise, are you getting my point? Now, Alex is thinking, what is this actually? What exercise mom is talking about? So, it's about the mental health, yes? So, mental health is very important, it's basically a state of well-being in which the individual realizes, sorry, in which the individual realizes his or own abilities and can cope with the normal stresses of life and can work productively and fruitfully. So, mental health actually, it includes your emotional, your psychological and social well-being. It affects how you think, just like you all are asking me questions, it affects how you think, how you feel and how you act, right? So, it's all about your mental health. When you say, ma'am, I know everything, but still I forget during the exam, I get fever before the exam, yes? So, all these things, that's what I am saying, no need to take pressure, it's about your mental health. Yes. Your parents told you to solve maths for this, for what? Yes? For good mental health or what is it? Amazing Hari, wow. That's good Fennel, so you, that's what I am saying, you know yourself well, right? You know what works best for you, so do it. It's not that, don't watch movies, don't listen to music, don't go out, don't play sports, you have your exams coming up, you need to balance, right? Yes, agree Nikki, yes. Kriti, ma'am, me also same like you, okay. Alright, so, I would say that, what, see, mental health is important because it affects, it also helps to determine how you handle stress. So, I think I have answered your question. How you handle this exam stress, it all depends on your mental health. So, you need to have a good mental health, right? So, now all of you understand the importance of mental health, right? How it's going to help you for your exams? How it is going to help you cope up with your exam stress? Yes? Agreed? Absolutely Hari, right? That's good Kiran, I used to do the same. Right Fennel, exams के आगे बोर्ड लगाने से, कि बोर्ड एग्जाम्स है, exams hard नहीं हो जाते. Earlier also, for the last nine years, you have been giving exams. So, that time, did you had that fear in your mind? No, right? It's because exams के आगे you have this board, board exams. Yes. So, I would say that, mental health is important at every stage of life, not just for students, for every stage of life, from childhood, adolescence, adulthood and even in aging, right? Even for us also, mental health is important. Like you students have exam stress, we also have work stress, we have other kinds of stress also, right? So, it all depends on our mental health, how we cope up with it, how we handle it. Thank you Gungun, so you all agree to it, right? Yes. So, mental health also, it keeps you active, it keeps you healthy, it also relieves the stress and it keeps you energized. So, now Alex's mother says, okay, let me share the benefits of mental health with you. Alright, so the benefits of mental health. First benefit, that it reduces the risk of frequent health issues. So, we often think of our mind and body as separate, but our mental health and physical health are interconnected, right? Obviously, they are. General, Joshi ma'am, how many hours do you study in class 10th? This question so many students ask, how many hours we should study, how many hours we should sleep? I will come back to this, I will come back to this question in a while, General. Yes. बड़ा पाओ, खाओ, जूस पियो, मजे करो, कोई तकलीफ नहीं है, अपना रूल। That's good Deepak, I think everybody should be like this, why are you taking stress? Yes, absolutely Hari, exam, exams, it's in your mind, yes? A small poem by Hari, yes? It all depends, like Ram says, he studies for only two hours per day, it all depends on him, it depends on his caliber, on his potential. Also, it depends how much he has actually prepared till now, right? Yes Nikki, that's right, hours doesn't matter, everybody, please keep this thing in mind. Nikki has shared a very nice thought, hours do not matter, efficiency matters, yes? See, whole day you are sitting with a book on your hand and you have done, you have learnt, let's say, you have done only one exercise of maths which has only ten questions. That means you were actually doing nothing the entire day, you will making fool, making fool out of yourself, yes? Parents give exam, fear of exams, I can understand, it used to happen with us also. That's why I am saying, importance of mental health, you need to understand. The people around you will say all these things, exams है, पढ़ो, 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 they will say that. But you need to understand, की प्रेशर नहीं लेना है, right? Yes. So, how it reduces the risk of frequent health issues, right? See, I would say, I would say that physical health problems, they significantly increase, increase the risk of developing mental health issues, right? And vice versa, you would agree to it, yes? And trust me, nearly one in every three people with long-term physical health problems, they also have a mental health issue as well, such as depression or anxiety. So, the people who have physical illness, long-term physical illness, there are more chances that they would have some mental health issue as well, right? It affects your mental health when you are, when you are, when you are sick for such a long time, isn't it? Yes. Courage plus work, that's success, nice, nice mantra Jonathan, yes? Yes, alright. So, another benefit of having a good mental health is, it increases your emotional strength, yes? You see that the mind and body, they are intrinsically linked, yes? You all understand this thing, that are mind and body, they are linked. If one of them is not working fine, the other thing will also be impacted, yes? That's what we are going to discuss General, yes, that's what we are discussing. So, let's say, when you improve your physical health, you will automatically experience an improvement in your mental and in your emotional health also. Have you ever, ever experienced this thing, yes? Hard work along with smart work. Hmm hmm, yes. Never stop trying, that's good. Yes Moli, keep calm and you will get success, right? Don't run after marks, that's the first thing. Yes Aisha, yes. Yes, no worries, when we are here. Right. So, I tell you a reason for this, when I say it increases the emotional strength, how does happen? There is a scientific logic behind it. Right, this is scientific logic, that your brain releases endorphins, it's basically, these are powerful chemicals that lift your mood, it actually provides added energy. Did you know that? Yes? Thank you Jonathan. Did any one of you know this thing? That their, your brain actually releases endorphins, it's, these are powerful chemicals, they will lift your mood and they would provide you added energy. Anyone knew about it? Yes. Right Dhanda, right. So, regular exercise and activity, it can have a major impact on your mental and emotional health problems. It actually relieves stress and it improves your memory also, that's good for students and it also helps you to sleep better. Yes, so from now on, I would suggest all of you, do, take a bit of time, just fifteen, twenty minutes and do regular exercise, exercise includes your, whether you are doing a sport also, right? You are jogging, listening to music, that is also included in this. Regular exercise you do and you do any, any kind of physical activity. You will actually notice a difference. Yes. Alright, another benefit of good mental health is that it reduces psychological pressure. See, mental health is basically a measurement of person's psychological, social and emotional well-being. So, it affects the way you think, you feel and you act, the way you cope up with life. So, sometimes poor mental health may lead to mental illness, right? And such as anxiety or depression, but it may also affect your physical health as well. So, people of every, any age, they can improve their mental health, it's not only for students. Right Gungun. Grabbing the book all the day and reading one exercise doesn't make any sense, that means you are actually not studying. Thank you Sakshi. So, I am not saying, yes, hard work, we always say that hard work doesn't mean that you are studying ten to fifteen hours in a day. You don't need that, trust me, in grade ten, actually it is not required. Yes. Another benefit or having, benefit of good mental health is that it increases productivity. This is for the students mainly, health and education are interdependent. Trust me, healthy students are the best learners. If you are sick, let's say you have a stomach ache, you have a head ache or your eyes are paining or whatever the reason is, that day obviously you won't feel like studying. Even if you are sitting with a book in your hand, you are just making fool out of yourself or you are just making fool out of your parents, right? You are actually not studying, you don't feel like studying. Your mind won't be able to concentrate on that case, isn't it? Agree, yes? Absolutely Urmila. Yes. All the very best Nirmla, yes? Thank you Aisha. Right Hasani, yes? Right Hari, agree with you, yes, completely. Yes. Alright, alright, so, it increases the productivity, so mental health is very, very important. So, we all have understood this, right? So, when you say, ma'am, I am stressed out, we have exams coming up, I fall sick before the exams, now we know that mental health is very important, right? Yes. Okay, now, a very interesting fun fact I wanted to discuss with you. So, there is an evidence that school-based programs in elementary, middle and high schools can influence positive mental health. These kind of things keep happening in school, right? And it reduces the risk factors and emotional and behavioral problems through socio-economic learning and ecological interventions. So, let me know if you found, find it amusing in the comment section below, yes? Still I can see students are being very tense about exams. Yes. Yes, nothing will happen, see, even if you are stressed out, you can't change anything, right? Why are you pressurizing yourself? Yeah? So, these kind of promotions of mental health, it's about basically creating environments, right? About that promote and sustain positive mental health for everyone. Activities and even interventions are designed to enhance positive protective factors and minimize the risk factors for everyone. Yes. Yes. Yes, absolutely. Give priority to your mental health, right? Even if you fail, never give up, because fail means first attempt in learning, wow, amazing Mansi. Yes. Ma'am, that's true, we laugh on the joke ten times more in school than in home because our parents don't find it funny, but our friends too, that's what. See, the environment that you have with your friends, right? So, the bond and obviously, you have a bond with your parents also, with your friends also, but the kind of bond with you have with your friends, it's different from the bond that you have with your parents, right? Yes? So, obviously duty is that you cannot do in front of your parents, you can do that very easy in front of your friends, right? Yes. Thank you Jackson. Is it okay to take a break one day from studies? I will answer this question. is it okay to take a break one day from studies I will answer this question in a while alright let's see now what alex mother says so alex says it seems like mental health is very very important so you also agree to this now right that mental health is important but how can I improve my mental health just now you asked we were asking me the same question but ma'am how to do it so now we will see how to how to actually improve our mental health right so let's move on to the strengthening part mother says so all the symptoms and anxiety that you showed earlier negative self-talk self-doubt low self-esteem all these things all these feelings that you have these are actually an outcome of unhealthy minds so any one of you who was saying that ma'am I fall sick before the exam I'm not confident or self-doubt whatever it is that shows that you have an unhealthy mind right yes right hasani I can understand these things the people around you they will keep saying exams are here pado 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 they will keep saying that no need to study entire day no need to study ten to fifteen hours a day trust me it is not needed especially in grade 10 you don't have that much of syllabus right you are not going to appear for an is exam yeah yes little bit of physical activity you should do right so alex says now alex is thinking about all those things that he had in his mind low self-esteem anger self-doubt distress fidgeting negative self-talk so how to strengthen the mental health right now we come to the solution now you will get your answers to your questions first thing is stay active so staying active is as good as the brain as good for the brain as it is for your body right absolutely molly so regular exercise and activity it can have a major impact on your mental and emotional health so start doing this from now on trust me you will see an improvement in your memory yes and it will help you to sleep better also it relieves stress yes right urmila yes if you are struggling today in the future will be bright absolutely it will be it's a lesson for life but I'm struggling doesn't mean that and apna bura hal kar raho no need to do that yes that's right I I discuss the same thing right endorphins yes alright another way to strengthen the mental health is talk to someone this is something very important right see whenever you have any kind of any kind of negative thought in your mind or you're stressed out you are tense you are nervous please talk to someone whosoever you are comfortable with whether it's your friend it is someone from your family your parents your teacher talking to someone who cares is one of the best way right is one of the I would say effective ways to calm your nervous system and to relieve stress yes that's many students are saying parents kap pressure here immense pressure so talk to someone in fact I would say talk to your parents they will understand you after all they are your parents they will understand what you're going through yes yes actually it can be a teacher for you when I see we have gone through the same thing when I used to be stressed out during my exams long time back when I was your age I also used to discuss that with my teachers yes right mancy right another way to strengthen your mental health is taking up a relaxation practice this I think I've told you many times even in in the sessions that I've taken before do yoga meditation take out some time deep breathing it will actually help in reducing the levels of stress start doing that see doesn't you don't need to you don't need a lot of time for this just fifteen twenty minutes in a day I'm sure that everyone can take out fifteen twenty minutes for yourself start doing it it actually helps yes chatting with friend daily so that's what I'm saying whatever works for you do it there is no harm in it even if you're chatting with your friend yes I know that someone might be your parents might say ki that you're wasting time that you keep wasting time talking to your friends on your phone or whatever but please I'm not saying for long hours you do it just for like you know just whenever you are taking a break like for fifteen twenty minutes or whatever you should do that but whenever you feel stressed out you feel that you need should talk to someone please do it that's good dande yes right metri and another way is make a leisure a priority I even I do it trust me see leisure time is a necessity for emotional and mental health so I would say that like you are studying for such long hours let's say after two hours one hours whatever it is take some time relax contemplate and pay attention to to the positive things as you go about your day right even small 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 things you can write them down because you know they can be easy to forget so leisure is important it's for for everyone not it's it's important I would say in for all the citizens in life whether whether it's your age it's our age or our elders it's important for everyone yes I'd say take the break while studying twenty thirty minutes yes that's right even there is scientific logic behind it after you been cannot concentrate for so long after every forty five minutes it's been seen that students do take a break now it all depends on your caliber like I can sit for like one hour I'm talking about long back when I was your age for one hour at a stretch after that I feel that okay now my brain seems like it stops working so take a break in that break you can do whatever you want whether you want to watch a movie movie doesn't mean you would watch a two and a half hours or three hours long movie taking a break means fifteen minutes twenty minutes or even half an hour whatever you want right yes but my point is whatever time you devote for your studies it should be productive let's say I I plan that okay this is my goal these are my goals for today make a checklist these three things I'll do today or these four chapters I'll cover today so I'll set for this much of time let's say I'll set for only four hours or five hours so don't extend that right don't extend that time try finishing that in that span of time only and rest of the time I'll do whatever I want to so once you are done with your day goal do whatever you want to why do you want to keep sitting entire day with a book in your hand right or usme what happens is you're not even focusing your brain is thinking about something else your brain is somewhere else and you just have a book in your hand isn't it it happens right yes 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 listening to music is a good thing or bad thing it is a good thing who says listening to music is a bad thing obviously it's a nice thing another way to strengthen good mental health is eat a healthy diet I know this is difficult this is something I know it is difficult to do so but still I would suggest you the foods that can support your mood that include fatty fish which is actually very written omega-3 so people who are non-vegetarians they can do it but who are vegetarians they can have nuts like walnuts cashew nuts almonds peanuts or you can have avocados beans leafy vegetables like kale spinach and fresh roots like berries these also actually help so eat try having a healthy diet right another thing don't skip on sleep trust me it matters more than you think right so one way to get a better sleep is to take a break from the stimulation of the screens like your TV mobile phones your laptops so before the like two hours before the bedtime you should take a break from all this while sleeping what many of us what we do is we have phones in our hand we keep watching youtube or scrolling instagram or something right don't do that so two hours before the bedtime you should stop doing this try inculcating these habits or I know it will take time but we can actually try to do it at least right right mancy it's a good technique yes alright another way to strengthening good mental health find purpose and meaning find purpose and meaning this is something that it's going to be different for everyone but you might try out few one of the following they can engage in work that you feel that it makes you feel useful like I'm doing teaching I like doing it or studying in an interesting manner so I think many of you were asking this question how I used to study in interesting manner if you ask me now what I prefer to do like if now I am studying or I'm doing my work I would not want anyone to disturb me I want pin drop silence but long time back when I was your age I could not study in you know in silence I would put on the music and then I would I would study otherwise I was not able to concentrate yes and in fact my parents also used to tell me but still it worked best for me I knew that so I did it that's what I was saying somebody asking me listening to music is good or bad it's good there is nothing bad in it see you know yourself best what works best for you do it yes so even if you have just youtube you might be spending I'm sure that because these days it happens kids are mostly they are on their phones or laptops yes yes jagan mohan tomorrow is the exam all the very best yes okay so you need to find the purpose also understand the concept before you learn in this is something that I think I say in every session understanding is important right don't mug up things yes I also have to listen to songs and give exams while singing songs it all depends on you what you want to do yes can't get rid of shorts yes see that's what you need to you need to decide it all depends on you try inculcating these things in your life I know you you can't change yourself right it you will you will see an improvement in yourself gradually yes how many hours we should sleep eight to nine hours of sleep is enough for everyone eight to nine hours good sleep is enough you don't need to sleep more than that yes ma'am but they say we should not listen to me about sitting I often get scolded for that I told you I used to get scolded for the same thing but I knew that it worked best for me so I did it now it depends on you see if you feel that you're listening to music so you're not able to concentrate then this is something that you need to think of it but you think that still it's working fine for you so do it I think nobody should stop you then what time we have to sleep at night depends on your schedule like now I'm a morning person right so I sleep generally I sleep I sleep early so depends if you sleep by nine pm or something but I would suggest one thing that when you are studying you should study in those hours when you are going to write your exam right because your brain it actually gets into a habit it will work best in that time so how many hours we should play how many hours we should play you're talking about sports right so at least like let's say you wake up in the morning early one hour you you do that or in the evening also you can go for one hour so in a whole day you can play for two hours because you see in grade 10 you don't have that much of syllabus that you need to study ten fifteen hours in a day right so I would suggest you exams are just one month away right make your timetable make your timetable and set goals for yourself do not set unrealistic goals right do what you can actually achieve yes and try to follow that strictly right jonathan yes you don't study in morning that's okay that means you might be a you might be a might be studying in the night that's fine if it is working for you yes right hurry alright so alex says I feel very calm and relaxed now now I think that you also feel the same right yes so mother says great get up now now take a proper break yes then you will able you will be able to concentrate on your studies so go out and relax does your mom also says that the go out and relax yes now you need to take a break does that happen with you also yeah we are no yes study talk with bhavna yes your mom also says this go out relax play for some time deepak no 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 movie no see hi yes ma'am see it's very important like I told you if you are a sports person wake up early go for play go for go out go out and play whatever you want to you can go out in the evening also but one one hour only right don't just keep playing for three four hours because you have your exams coming up so what I would suggest you you need to maintain an equilibrium between the study and the mental health so how to do it three hours you need to remember rest revise rest and review what does that mean let's say I'm studying right now right let's say I have a everyone has a different span of focusing right let's say I can sit for one hour and in that one hour would be very productive for me right I can concentrate for one hour at a stretch some for some people it might be forty five minutes for some it might be thirty minutes depends person to person so after one hour whatever I have learned first I'll do a quick review in my mind okay this is what I have learned right just a quick thing right for just two three minutes and then rest rest doesn't mean that you go and sleep it can be it's basically it's about taking a break you can do whatever you want in that break you might want to listen to music you might want to lie down for some time you might want to go out so let's say I take a break for fifteen twenty minutes right let's say twenty minutes twenty five minutes or half an hour whatever it is in that half an hour I'll try to relax basically to relax my mind so that after that once I again get back to studies I'll do a quick review review means question yourself just random questions you can ask and then you can check how much I still remember this is the best way to memorize trust me I used to do this as well till now also I do this and it actually works yes sleep eat repeat yes wow that's that's nice hurry after finishing syllabus do the sample papers that's the best practice I would say at this point of time six hours screen time no 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 I would not suggest that yes I know due to pandemic we have got into a habit of this but try not to do it if you are see if you are taking any class online class you are learning something that's a different thing but after that try not to use these gadgets yes it happens with me also sunali right so what I do is these three hours revise rest review try doing it best way to memorize things yes alright so so alex has understood this and I'm sure that you all have also understood the importance of mental health now so before we end this session I just did you know this that seventy to ninety percent of people who seek proper measures for mental health they witness a significant reduction in symptoms of mental health so let me know if you knew or if you already knew that in the comment section so that's all I hope that it was fruitful for all of you you all have actually understood the importance of mental health whatever measures I suggested you you would try inculcating them in your everyday life so gradually you will see a change in yourself see the change will not happen in just one day right magic gradually you will see a change yes we have to understand right yes sleep pattern yes you asked me sleep patterns so sleep pattern doesn't mean eight to nine hours of sleep sleep in the entire day not more than that I would suggest that's actually enough also also now it depends whether you like up at a stretch eight to nine hours of sleep or you want that six hours of sleep in the night and in the afternoon also you want to sleep for two hours it depends on you but in a whole day it should be eight to nine hours yes thank you sukshuth video on time management for timetable don't worry we will come up with something don't worry about that sakshi tried this did it work for you sakshi that's what I mentioned deepak eight to nine hours of sleep that's it thank you sukshuth yes alright alright so at the end I would just like to say one thing that keep calm and be healthy yes yes thank you sunali that's great mancy thank you so don't worry we have got so many sessions lined up for you from every monday to friday to make you exam ready we are here for you and we have got free trial classes as well and link is given in the description below click on it and get all your doubts clarified instantly during the class and please like share and subscribe and so that you do not miss any new updates from us so I hope this session was fruitful for all of you you all liked it yes and you all will try inculcating those things from now on yes thank you thank you kokil anandani yes alright thank you so much I'll see you soon bye